Good morning and welcome to the City of Rapid City Planning Commission Meeting for September 7th, 2017. If any member of the audience wishes to speak to an item on the Planning Commission Agenda, there are speaker request forms on the table along the left wall. Please fill out the request with the Agenda number of the item you wish to speak to and hand it to the staff seated on the left of the dais. At this time, we would also like to ask that if any member of the audience has a cellphone or other electronic device, that you either turn it off or turn the ringer to silent. If you need to take a call, please step out to the hallway so that the meeting is not disrupted. Items one through three have been placed on the consent calendar and may be approved as a group. Action will be taken on all consent items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration at this time. The findings of this planning commission are recommendations to the City Council. The City Council will make the final decision. Are there any items one through three that staff would like removed?
No, thank you.
Are there any items one through three that the Planning Commission would like removed? And are there any items one through three that an audience member would like removed?
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Steve made the motion to approve the consent calendar, items one through three. Karen made that motion. Any further discussion, sorry, the second on the motion. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item number four.
Item number four is seventeen PD-031, an initial and final plan development overlay to allow a preschool. In particular, this is for Rural America Initiatives. Properties located in the Johnson Ranch subdivision, which is along South Valley Drive and south of St. Pat and just west of, southwest of forty-four. Zone medium density residential district. We've seen to the south here, initial plan development for some single-family dwellings. And there's been discussion before about South Valley Drive. The applicant's proposing to construct a two-phased development. Phase one includes classrooms and support facilities, and phase two consists of a gym, and this will serve one hundred and twenty children with seventy staff members. Currently, the property is void of any structural development, and the future land use shows it as low-density neighborhood. And there you can see east St. Pat to the north. And then here's a vicinity map showing you how it, we have Elphell Road, East Highway forty-four, east St. Pat, and South Valley Drive as a collector's street. Site plan showing what is being proposed. This is, I'll outline in blue what is phase two, the gymnasium. And so up here is the phase one, which is the classrooms and support facilities. The applicant is requesting three exceptions, an exception to a height of thirty-eight feet in lieu of the maximum allowed height of thirty-five feet for the phase-two gymnasium, an exception to reduce the parking aisle width for fourteen parking spaces from twenty-six feet to twenty-four feet, and that's in this area, and an exception to allow two ground signs measuring, each measuring ninety-eight square feet in lieu of the maximum allowed one ground sign measuring thirty-two square feet, and those are located along South Valley Drive at each of the entrances. Landscape plan showing what's being proposed, and landscaping is in compliance with the landscape ordinance. And here we have rendering of what the facility will look like. As you can see, the phase-two, thirty-eight feet, it'll be set behind the phase-one structure, so having that as a buffer between the South Valley Drive and the single-family residential to the west, and having this, the large setback to the building, and then even the gymnasium being setback behind that. Staff is recommending that the exception be granted for the height for the gymnasium. There you can see from more like ground level what that would look like, including some of the wall signage that is proposed for this preschool. So here we have a view of what the proposed ground signs. The exception is to allow two ground signs in lieu of the one that is allowed for school in the medium-density residential district, and the maximum size of those signs is thirty, sorry, thirty-two square feet. This one is ninety-eight square feet, so it's about twelve by, can't see the other number, twelve by seven total in size. Staff is, or the applicant has indicated that the two signs will identify the location of the two approaches and will assist with traffic and people knowing that both entrances can be used, so traffic coming from the north will use the first entrance and be able to recognize it, and traffic from the south will be able to use the south entrance. Staff is recommending that the exception to allow two signs be granted. However, because this is a residential neighborhood, staff is recommending that the exception to allow ninety-eight square feet foot signs be denied and that the thirty-two square feet be maintained as allowed by the ordinance. The third exception being the twenty-four-foot aisle in lieu of twenty-six feet. The parking in this area is going to be designated for staff, and it does not interfere with circulation around the site. So staff is recommending that that exception to reduce the aisle width be granted. Here we have, they are doing grading out on the site, the sign is posted. This is looking at where the future residential, single-family will be to the south, south along South Valley Drive at the, you can see some of the established residential neighborhood on that west side of South Valley Drive, and it's looking directly across the street, and then north along South Valley Drive towards the intersection with St. Patrick Street. And then to the north of the property is where some commercial development is going to be taking place in the future. With that, staff is recommending that the initial and final plan development be approved with stipulations noted in the staff report. Are there any questions for staff at this time, or the applicant or their consultant is available in the audience for any questions?
Steve made the motion to approve with stipulations. Karen seconded that motion. I see no other lights up. Any questions, comments on the motion on the floor? Karen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say congratulations to people from Rural America Initiatives and this project. It's a beautiful building, and I think once it's up, people will just thrive and it'll just, it'll just be such a nice new addition to our community and to those folks who really need it. So I wish you good luck on raising more funds, and hopefully this'll be something that'll prompt that, and once you get started, that'll work. So, thank you for doing this for us, and obviously, we all approve of this, I think. So, thank you.
Thanks, Karen. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item number five.
Item number five is seventeen RZ-024, rezoning request from Park Forest District to Low Density Residential District. This has been on the agenda before, back at the August tenth Planning Commission Meeting, and the applicant has requested to continue the item in order to submit engineering data for staff to review. Give you some review of where it's located. Property zone, Park Forest District, has this property to the west. Here we have Catron Boulevard running along that east side of the property. Property is currently undeveloped. To the west here, we have a Bed and Breakfast, which was approved through a conditional use permit. Future land use of the property is low-density neighborhood. As such, the rezoning of the low-density residential district would seem to be in support of, or the future land use would be in support of that. Staff's concern was that there was not any, anything to show that streets or water and sewer could serve this property. The applicant's consultant has provided a preliminary street alignment, which includes sanitary sewer and water system engineering analysis and design information, which indicates the property may be served by the extension of the street, sanitary sewer and water infrastructure from Catron Boulevard. Their submitted plan shows eighteen single-family residential lots between zero-point-two-one and zero-point-seven-eight acres in size. And as such, with this general utility layout and street layout that the applicant has submitted to staff for review, staff is recommending that the rezoning request be approved. Are there any questions for staff at this time?
I don't have any lights up. Any questions on this one? All right, Steve made the motion to approve the rezoning. Kim seconded that motion. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item number six.
Item number six is seventeen UR-018, a conditional use permit to allow an on-sale liquor establishment in conjunction with a salon. In particular, this is for the existing Man Salon located at twenty-three thirty-five West Main Street, Suite two-twenty. So it's on the south side of Main, West Main Street, east side of Harder Drive. Property's own general commercial district, it's located in the established commercial corridor in the city. There is some residential to the south, located on the property is also an on-sale liquor establishment for Zimerick's Restaurant. Here we have a view showing the existing building and other development in the area. Future land use is mixed-use commercial, so the on-sale use and the general commercial district is appropriate for the zonings and future land use. And we see West Main Street is a principal arterial street on the city's major street plan. Site plan, the existing building, we have Zimerick's in the suite located on West Main, the Man Salon, which is this conditional use per, conditional use permit, and then there's a sign shop located in the third suite over there with some storage in the middle. This is the location of a former gas station and car wash and convenience store, so this has been a good revitalization for West Main Street and bringing uses in, and supporting those uses is good. Here we have some applicant photos showing some of the existing signage, pole sign on West Main and some of the building signage, the signage for the Man Salon. Staff photos, the conditional use permit sign for on-sale is located in the windows, can't really see it from outside, but it is located, it is on the property. Fast signs is the other buildings, Zimerick's. Looking at the parking lot, general commercial district would require a screening fence along the property line with residential, and that screening fence is there. Looking at Keller Williams, Black Hills to the west, they're doing some renovation and building on their site, and this is looking down Harder Drive to the south at that residential district. And then looking from Harder Drive north to West Main Street, and there's an Arby's across the street. Looking along West Main to the east and other gas stations and restaurants in the area, and looking to the west along West Main. Because this proposed on-sale use is in conjunction with a salon, the applicant is indicating that the sale of beer or wine will only be for customers coming in, waiting for their appointments for haircuts and other services that they provide. And for these reasons, staff is recommending that the conditional use permit be approved with stipulations noted in the staff report.
Thanks, Fletcher. Any questions for Fletcher on this one? Kim made the motion to approve for the stipulations. Thank you. Gerald made the second on that. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven.
Item number seven is seventeen UR-019, a conditional use permit to allow an on-sale liquor establishment in conjunction with a restaurant. This is for Blaze Pizza located under construction at five-fifteen Mountain View Road. Property's own general commercial district, and again, is located in that same West Main Street commercial corridor which is established, and this is another redevelopment of the property. It used to be the location of the Kentucky Fried Chicken and will now be a Blaze Pizza, which is, also has another location in Rushmore Crossing. This shows the previous Kentucky Fried Chicken that used to be located on the property, but it is a developed area. Mixed-use commercial, and then to the south, you can see that there's a community activity center located on this future land use plan, and that's the Bacon Park Community Activity Center. And again, the major street plan showing Mountain View Road, West Main Street, West Omaha as principal arterial streets. Here we have, I believe this is the applicant's photo of the sign, or the pole sign located on the property advertising the future use. And then this is, these are some pictures of the building as it's going up from the applicant. Here we have the site plan. This was approved through a building permit already. There is a patio area located on the west side of the building, so away from Mountain View Road, which would be over in this area, and that is also being requested for the on-sale liquor use. Staff photos, you see a sign posted on the property. Looking north on Mountain View Road towards Omaha Street, to northeast, some park area. Looking to the east, we have a car wash and a fast food restaurant. And then this is looking south on Mountain View Road towards the intersection with West Main Street and Bacon Park to the, oop, to the south in that area, and Safeway and other businesses. So this is a, a large commercial corridor. This is looking directly to the south of the property. This is many entrances to this little strip mall area, there's an O'Reilly Auto Parts Restaurant and other strip mall in this area. This is looking at the, the building, and they're, as you can see, currently working on it. And this is looking at that west side of the building at the, where the patio area would be, and a lot of the landscaping. And looking west from that, we, you can see where the, the strip mall to the back, and there are other on-sale liquor uses, in particular with a casino in this area. This one, though, is, like I said, in conjunction with a restaurant. And then looking north from that back area, there's the railroad right-of-way, and then a bank located just north of there. Because this is in conjunction with a restaurant located in a commercial corridor, and it supports the comprehensive plan of redevelopment and supporting that redevelopment, staff is recommending that the conditional use permit be approved with stipulations noted in the staff report. Are there any questions?
Thanks, Fletcher. Steve?
I'll have no problem approving this, but I just wanted to thank them for doing something besides a square box. You drive by there, and I looked, and I'm like, wow, that's pretty cool, and it's a pizza place. So they actually put some architecture into it, it's got, you come around there, it looks nice, it stands out. If you've never been there, they have amazing pizza, that's all I'm saying.
Thanks, Steve. Karen?
Thank you. I echo the same thing about the building, this is a really nice-looking building. I just had two quick questions, more curiosity than anything else. Does the other Blaze Pizza location, do they have on-sale liquor also?
Yes, they do.
Okay. And when, when they're saying on-sale liquor, is that for beer and wine, or is it gonna do other things?
It's beer and wine.
Okay. I figured that, because that kind of goes with pizza, but just curious. Okay, thank you, that's it.
Any other questions, comments? That's all I've got on my light list.
Move to approve.
All right, Steve made the motion to approve per stipulations. Rachel seconded that motion. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed? The motion carries. Item number eight.
Item number eight is seventeen VR-006, a vacation of right-of-way request. Give you an idea, it is about a less than ten-square-foot vacation of right-of-way request adjacent to eleven-thirty Pine Hills Drive, low-density residential district in the area. This doesn't line up, but there is a corner of the attached garage which encroaches into Pine Hills Drive right-of-way. The applicant is requesting the vacation of right-of-way in order to remove that corner from being directly in the right-of-way. However, this does not fix the fact that there is a zero-foot setback. So if they're, if the structure were to be damaged beyond fifty, over fifty percent of its value, they would need a variance in order to build back in the same location, otherwise they'd be required to have a twenty-foot front yard setback. Future land use is low-density neighborhood, and then it's located on west of Sturgis Road. Pine Hills Drive is a street which accesses a small residential area on the northwest side of the city. The exhibit showing, it is only encroaching three feet into the right-of-way, it is total of ten square feet. Pine Hills Drive is a local street requiring a minimum of fifty-two feet of right-of-way. The applicant's indicated that the vacation request would maintain a minimum of sixty-three feet of right-of-way. Here we have a picture showing where the garage encroaches into that right-of-way, but you can see there's no curb and gutter, and there's no sidewalk located on this street. And then, let me show you some pictures. You can see that as you go to the west, the elevation starts to rise, and here you can see a little bit more rising in this area. Staff is recommending that the vacation of right-of-way request be denied. Like I said, the vacation of right-of-way doesn't approve the non-conforming setback, they would still need a variance to that. In addition, public works staff has indicated that based on the topography in the area, future reconstruction and/or expansion of Pine Hills Drive and the extension of public utilities may require that the street be moved. And based on the topography, it'd be more likely to be moved to the east where the garage is located than up the hill to the west. Again, showing that distance between the street, no curb and gutter, no sidewalk, so trying to fit that in there should that be needed in the future. Staff is recommending that the vacation right-of-way request be denied. Are there any questions for staff?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Vicki.
Just a point of clarification. So, we understand that there is an encroachment today, and that creates a violation, and that doesn't go away if the right-of-way isn't vacated. So in lieu of that, public work staff has indicated that they would support entering into an encroachment agreement with the applicant that would allow the building to stay as-is. If it were ever removed or, or destroyed because of fire or flood, they could not build back in the right-of-way, and if we ever needed the right-of-way for those utilities or street improvements that Fletcher noted, then we could request that they remove that part of the building at that time. I just wanted to make sure that you understood we're, we're offering them another option.
Thank you. Rachel?
My question is actually for the applicants, if they're here.
They are not here.
Okay. I'm, I'm just confused, this just seems kind of out of left field, you know, it's just a, a garage, and you're asking them to destroy part of their property, and so I'm just trying to figure out why you would do that, but I guess they're not here, so.
So what is happening is that the property owner is putting the house up for sale, and someone is interested in buying it, but because of the encroachment into the right-of-way, they're probably not being able to get financing. So in order to fix that, they're proposing to vacate the right-of-way, which like I said, doesn't fix the front yard setback, but it would at least allow the garage to be not located within the public right-of-way. However, the encroachment agreement should be sufficient to remedy that.
So, so this is all about them basically trying to, they're buying this property, and then they're also trying to just kind of go through the, the financing regulations or whatever, just so that they can get financing to buy the property?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Vicki.
We're working with the current owners, and they own several properties here in Rapid City, so their intent is to clear the cloud on the title so that it can get through a closing.
I see.
That's the ultimate goal here, and their options would be to vacate the right-of-way, remove that part of the structural encroachment, and they could remove that part that encroaches into the right-of-way. The balance of the building would be legal non-conforming. They wouldn't have to get a variance for that building to be okay, but if it were ever destroyed and they needed to rebuild, they would then have to provide the necessary setback or get a variance. The last option is to enter into an encroachment agreement. We don't need the right-of-way today. We're fine with the building staying there as-is for now, but we don't want to give up the right-of-way in case we should need it in the future for street or utility improvements, and then the taxpayers would have to go back and buy that right-of-way that we vacated.
I see. Okay, thank you.
John Roberts?
Thank you very much, and I hope I give a little bit of latitude speaking on this. I just want to speak on this, not as a council member or being on the staff, but as a Realtor. You know, I know with this encroachment agreement, it's going to be very difficult to find anybody to buy it because of the fact that if you're buying a home, you kind of expect your garage or house to be there forever. And the city's saying that, you know, if they come in and they need that space, they can tear down your garage. It makes it a little bit problematic to sell your property, and I think it's also going to be a little problematic for them to get a loan on it. I can't imagine that a bank would take that chance, and I think there'd also be some issues with the title company giving title insurance on a company, or on a home that could possibly have its garage removed at some point in time. So I think there's going to be some real issues on this with, and I'm sure that city staff and the city attorney have, have looked into this, but I think that on the buy side, and that's just what I'm talking about, is the buy side, this is going to be a little problematic to get sold. So, anyway, thank you.
Thanks, John. Karen?
Thank you. I understand what you're saying, John. The question that I have, though, is that if you allow that little notch of right-of-way to be gone, then you've got this road with a chunk out of it, kind of, you know, out of your right-of-way. And it, from a planning standpoint, that doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me. And if they're planning in the future to maybe move that road to the east, I don't know how that affects that, that, but I would say that you would still need those utilities, and they're still, it's still going to be so close to that building that either way, to me, the best option is to try the other idea and to see if they can't get a, I forgot what you said, encroachment. And I don't know if the attorney's office wants to weigh in on that, but I, I would think that if I was buying that property, I know where it's at, and I would want to know what the ramifications would be down the road. I wouldn't want to go into a purchase of a home. I wouldn't want to go into a purchase of a home knowing that it could be widened and, you know, the road could come right next to my garage like that. So to me, I think the right thing is to, to try the encroachment scenario and to deny the right-of-way. So that's my comments.
Steve?
Yeah, I'm kind of agreeing with, with Karen because Vicki, if I heard you right, let's say we did this and in the future, we need to build a road there, then we're going to have to come and, and buy the property. So it doesn't, even if we do this, it still doesn't solve the problem, but if we need that to build the road there someday, we're still going to get it, we just might have to pay for it down the road. Is that correct?
Mr. Chair, if we could have Ted Johnson speak to that.
Sure. Ted?
Thank you. In answer to your question, Steve, that would be our expectation if this is granted in the future, if that road's widened, utilities are put in there, rebuilt, the citizens would end up buying that property to get that right-of-way back. Because when you, if you give up this right-of-way, you're not only giving up that piece of right-of-way, you're giving up the setback clearance, whether it's a variance is granted to zero setback, you still have to have a setback or separation between the utilities, the street and that house. So it takes not only three feet, but eighteen or twenty feet out of the road right-of-way to be able to make this house or build around the house. And I, to Mr. Roberts' point, the encroachment does create a problem or may create issues in the future. The lack of setback, a variance to zero setback will also create a problem in the future because if that house is ever destroyed, they can't build it back, they can't replace it. So it, it, either way, it causes a problem. They're just not a good answer. It's unfortunate that it's built where it is and it was built in the right-of-way. We don't know what the setback was at the time. There's been setbacks required in city and county for, for years. Some of the, the structures on West Boulevard had setbacks when they were built, you know, a hundred years ago. But regardless, it was never acceptable to build in the right-of-way. So a piece of that house that's in the right-of-way was, you know, in violation anyhow. So that's a long way around your question, but I hope I answered it.
Thank you.
Galen, if I could jump in with a follow-up for Ted. I'm sorry to interrupt your, but you kind of got to where what I was wondering. The, we have a lot of old neighborhoods with very thin roads, so to speak, where, that were, that were built where two cars can nearly not pass each other easily. Were those built with smaller right-of-ways or did the right-of-ways always exist in the, in the fashion that we see them in, like, in this case?
Thank you, sir. This has fairly adequate right-of-way. It was a wider right-of-way to start with. Some of the stuff, maybe you're talking in Canyon Lake area where they have those narrow streets. That's narrow right-of-way. It was always built with a forty-foot, thirty-five-foot right-of-way. The street pavement now basically goes from right-of-way line to right-of-way line. The buildings are set back from the right-of-way, but it's narrow right-of-way to start with.
This case is a, started with a wider right-of-way and, and this?
It is a wider right-of-way.
This house just projected into the right-of-way from the start.
Yeah, for some reason, nobody knows, it was built, I think, in fifties, fifty-nine. It's been there for a lot of years. Out, probably would have been under county permit, but we can't find any of that information. But somewhere, somehow, it was either built and added on to or built and offset some place through the process, it ended up being built in the right-of-way to start with. So existing right-of-way at that time. And right-of-way hasn't changed. It's the same right-of-way from when it was plotted.
Thank you. Galen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is, what happens under the do-nothing scenario where if they don't get, get the vacation and they also do not enter the encroachment agreement? Then does a city have the right to, you know, when they want to come in and redo the streets, do those upgrades? Can this, what, can the city still take that property back or what happens under that scenario? Where, where not, where we do nothing here?
So encroachments into right-of-way are never grandfathered in or if we annex property and there's an encroachment, it doesn't come in with a get-out-of-jail-free card attached to it. Encroachments have to be addressed and in this case, potentially removed. And I'll let Kinsley speak to what the city's code enforcement division might do if it's determined that we would need that right-of-way and how we would pursue that.
Kinsley?
There we go. Thanks. Kinsley grew up with the city attorney's office. Yes, we, we'd need to sue the landowners at the time and basically bring a lawsuit to have it torn down.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, just a, a general comment. There are probably numerous encroachments into right-of-way to some degree throughout our city. We are made aware of them when the property gets put on the market for sale, structural survey is done, and as John adequately and fairly disclosed, that, that does become a problem for the seller, especially the buyer. That's when they approach the city and we do everything we can to work with them so that they can get that on the market without jeopardizing the interests of the city. And that's why in this particular case, our compromise is enter into the encroachment agreement, let it stay. We don't know when that road might get rebuilt, but when we do, we don't want to use taxpayer dollars to buy that right-of-way back.
Steve?
Yeah, thank you Vicki, because it sounds like to me at some point in time, somehow somebody built where they weren't supposed to build. And this gentleman now has the house and he's trying to figure out what's at night. I just wanted to say thank you to the city for, you know, they could just tell him, hey, you got to remove it. It's very illegally, but they're not. They're working with them in every way they can. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Okay, Steve made the motion to deny the vacation of right-of-way. Rachel seconded that motion. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Staff items, planning commission items?
Yes, I have an update for Steve Rollinger. The disc golf course located along Omaha Street has been disrupted due to a drainage improvement project for that area of the city land. They anticipate that it will be one year before that project is complete. Jeff has identified that Claire Schroeder and Gail Shipke with the Public Works Department are spearheading that project. And I wanted to provide you with those names because if you want details about what areas of the park might open up, maybe you could visit one-on-one with one of them and they could fill you in on that schedule.
Actually, I did get a call. I spoke with them and they told me it was going to be done this fall. So do I need to light a fire again?
Perhaps the entire project is the year and the area you're interested in is going to be completed this fall.
Or did I start a fire?
Maybe you want to get confirmation on that, but my email says it takes a year. But when I visited in the hallway with Claire, he did say that different parts of the project would be completed at different times. So hopefully the area that you use, when you stop by and use an area of the golf course, maybe that part, part's going to be completed by this fall.
Well, I did get a call and thank you. They, I, I had a good conversation. They did explain to me the process, so I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
And then, Mr. Chair, I have one more item.
Sure.
So as you know, we have a list for all of you to participate as the liaison for the planning commission and represent this board to the city council and to be available if they've got questions as to the discussion or action that occurred at Planning Commission. When you see that you're on that list and you can't attend, it's on you to find a replacement or to let us know and then we will try to find a replacement for you. But just kind of a reminder that if you can't make it, let us know and, or find a replacement. We certainly like having someone there so that we're well-represented at city council. Thank you.
We got one more. Steve?
I, I got one. I, I get this letter about every day and I just thought the city might want to know this. It says, "Good morning, Steve. Just wanted to follow up with our conversation that we had March fourteenth," which apparently I wasn't part of it. "In regards to Rapid City, it's a new project. We ran a DNB analysis and you scored seventy-six out of eighty, which places you in the top tier of your industry. Your company is true for a line of credit at three-point-seven-five percent. You can access two-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars and thirty-seven cents." So there you go. I get that almost on a daily basis. Oh, you too.
Hope the city has a little bit more borrowing power than that.
But you're seventy-six out of eighty according to the DNB.
I'd look for a motion to adjourn. Steve made the motion. Galen seconded the motion. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? We're adjourned.